Okay, time in seven oh five to call the Halifax planning board into session. Members present Brendan Elliott, Amy Troop and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have a bill for WB Mason. Seven PM, we have sixty-three Carver Street continuation. Seven fifteen, we have a site plan for three fourteen Plum Street. Discussion for Walmont Franklin Street solar array. Yes, Bill, Coster Lane status. Subdivision control regulations two thirty-five six. See in our timeframe and date zoning board bio law review project presented dates with Mark. Wabowski. Meeting minutes to approve for May sixth and the correspondence. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Second. Hold it.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a bill for WB Mason invoice number two-two-one-zero-six-nine-three-three-nine. I have a motion to pay twelve dollars and forty-one cents.
Two second.
I'll second.
Hold it.
Aye.
Aye.
It's a toner, huh?
Okay. Seven to seven, so. Go to sixty-three Carver Street continuation of section.
I have a great question. I didn't think last meeting that we had any issues. And when I was reviewing the. Me, all the communications from other boards earlier today, it didn't seem that anybody had any issues. Jason Viveras says I reviewed the site plan submitted for sixty-three Carver Street dated six-ten. And it failed, and failed to comply with Massachusetts compliance and fire code. I have four twelve twenty-one. Yes, another one that was.
Any type of question?
You have, you have a site plan on what day, four o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
And now we're saying that last meeting too, this has a date, wasn't tied on. We have a six updated receipt set seventeen. So it's different, is it different than what we have? But it's not the same four o'clock.
Joe, two different plans you have.
Yes, yes. But none of them are six-ten.
Joe, do you have a revised plan, revised date or can I get the?
I don't see a revised date, but I'm pointing the date on the six-ten.
I don't know why it made me put it without a date on it. I'm not sure what's on it.
I know that they added the, the wording to the fire, sure they added two things, the wording for the bin and the equipment. And they added the height, length and width of the log pile. And then I think there was a small thing on the back.
You did speak to Jason last week and he said he was on that board.
He did, he did. Yeah, yeah, I was just stating that he was saying that the site plan was dated June tenth, I saw. Not meaning anything.
Joe, is this the same plan that you got with that?
Our last meeting was six nineteen, so this was what we had, this was what was in our file.
Is this for the?
Six, six, six.
Ah. Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see that.
You get the, you get the height of the buildings and then I thought, thanks.
Yeah.
The only other comment that I got from Steve Heywood, and I forgot if I come off there too great. Yep, he, he had some concern. Because this is throughout, under development, you don't want any crowd going out into, seeing this, so anything going out onto Carver Street. So it was part of the lot. Today, the easiest solution for that is to put in a still patient area, base and light in this area. So that this all just naturally goes down into here and then just bypasses, just really, just really. Basically get a rating, make a little soil, throw some rock in it. We can, we can get to the diagram of that. That will help to maybe, yes.
So we, we.
And then you're just doing reprocesses after all the way up.
I think we were ready, we didn't get someone in or, which I guess might be an okay. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I made a three-fourteen.
Sorry. Some line too.
Good, how was Rockford?
Nine to five. Well, I'm sorry, we can, we can, we've seen interview, Rick Allen, Jake, and Tom, and me, so.
Yeah, but how was it operating on site?
Oh, on site, it's, it's, we're there at nine o'clock, we leave, we come back at five o'clock around.
I do have a school group play over there.
Yeah.
I don't know what the sign.
Well.
Daylight, it's, it's, yeah, we have daylight basically.
We only have, you asked me first, my husband, my wife, I'm full time employee. The gas trucks coming in, I have a lot of trucks and, you know, carings. I've been running my business out of my pants, which is frankly, really, some of those walls.
Yeah. Probably not even that big.
Brendan, you have any?
I have no questions.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve. The application for site plan review, the site plan, where is the number? I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for two seventy Franklin Street. I'm sorry, let me start over because I'm reading and not making.
I just had a question, not specific to the business, but in general, because there's a couple, it seems to be a few businesses coming to town. The production of wood chips and the noise levels of the lakes on smaller lakes. I just have a concern about that agenda as these businesses come into town.
Look, with that question from last meeting, we have the hat here, I only have each of, I have the.
Are you?
Yeah. And it's not something that will be running all the time, we take the shooter with us. The awesome laws of property are a real good process here, to sell to local vendors. But it's not going to be early mornings, not related to.
That's not what they need, is it?
I don't know, but this is a show.
I should say, this is concerning, because I spoke to the D E D, did they, did they, did County Woods consider that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the site plan for sixty-three Carver Street. Map seventy-one, block ten, signed by the engineer on six-ten, two thousand twenty-one. Should we put a revision date on, like change the revision date on the long time sign or?
No, we can read the date and then.
Okay. All right, sir.
I will second that.
Hold it.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you. Uh, do we need to run in front as well?
Good. Top four, okay, night of three.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Good, what stuff we have, we got in the list.
Not no wedding, wedding in mind.
Really, it picks up on it, yeah.
Uh, would be the meal considered? And the meal we're presenting, uh, food storage. The site is at three fourteen Plum Street. And we have the, the, which is, this is where the bottom stand is carved. Right, right here, we have the driveway that goes to the stock and shop. And we have the new old ride on this side, and we have the pileup that goes all the way on that side. Currently, the site has the, the bottom stand and the trucks. And then we got the outdoor porch, wood and everything. There currently is a small weapon in the backyard, and that clearly probably, we have about fifty foot of platforms and a hundred foot. So this is kind of, it's a little bit, and then. What food storage would like to do, is they would like to construct approximately twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four square foot building. For complete inside storage. Neil can show you some scenes of what they've already done with that type of building. Currently, there are three per cuts of home that Meson Rapids have. We've given a two, two way with the one that's here, but we still want to use these for two. So we got some circular traffic flow. We installed the second system on the new start area. We have satisfactory circulation test for that. We also are going to be designing stone wall drainage system in this area. We've also done tests that's there to determine the other things, heights. And we're going to be through a cat face, manhole, and we're going to be collecting all the surface water. And then distributing it to people training it into this area of the year. Which would be, there's anything, we're not going to be stone. We are, is that going to be all, that's going to be all of those. We're going to put it all back, so it is open. We are going to be proposing for this facility, which is storage. When the zoning bylaws, by our calculations, we need eighteen spaces, parking spaces. We are providing that. And Neil can tell you that he's under the depression of the other sites that they have, eighteen, eighteen parking, more than enough for this type of building. Traffic flow, that is minimum. Again, you can explain that primarily on weekends, but this will all be contained inside storage. You want to show them, right, what's left of you?
Sure. Joe, what do you use to determine the parking spaces?
You determine everything, but it's a.
Going on the carpet, the carpet, the parking, the parking, we estimate that that's a study. Depending on what we have, the whole storage, they have high, they're probably around thirty units per day. We're really, really high range, so providing end market basis would be over built, so it's sort of provided at least that. And that's at ninety-five, so, and here, there's no national standard, they're unable to approve for sort of parking, they're just, your standards. When we put that in, that's, that's very, very expensive. So it's able to be a little bit back, that type of usage on that site. Our group store, I brought a number of books, I have all on PDF right now, the group of, PDF, just your name, there are two different roles, the road, the road, the door, the door, the way for this. Here's some records and other sites to go back and go and see who was on. This is a site that blast house, which more than, more than the site that, both of them here, is very flat out, it's hard to build, and many food stores. But that's the type of building that we built. You can see that's not your traditional expectation of a storage facility, it's not a road building, it's, you can just drive it down right to the side of one, who's, you know, shorted. Some people would say attractive, uh, over the type facilities. What it does add at times, we're not exactly sure what the final layout would be, but we also offer the drive up access around the first floor for rent. A lot of times the contractor, like those law, we can get them a little bit earlier, go there a little bit later, and they have a direct access to the outside. We provide on the park, not from off the park, the drive up, so they can park access. Those units, the majority of the units are also maintained within the building. And all the buildings should be fine, so we're good. So this is the blast house site that we're doing. This is for, this was, and this one was almost, sorry, almost twenty-five, the blast site, it's literally here. This one was due back, this was the old recycling plant that was, here in the time that it was purchased, it was an old, pretty unsighted building. But this is just about open as well, this is why we have the end spot, this one blast is open. Sometimes the neighbors are similar right now. But you can see that this one, you have a bunch of dryers along the front. So that's kind of what they expect to see along the river, of the areas where we fit the room off the dryers, so it can be a part. And then most of the units here are in areas, this is, this is. This is about, most of the guy, where, Massachusetts, this doesn't have tools yet. This is another concept designing, see the same idea kind of close to, this would be, I'll try to stick with from facilities out of the building. Right now, we have one in, one in Massachusetts over there, one in Swansea, one in Manchester, and one in Craster right now.
Good, that's similar to what you proposed in here.
The other ones, this, this is the style for all the new builds, this is what all the new builds look like. The one that was born around was a shopping center converted. So it had similar, it was a little dirty, it was stuck up the sides, it was kind of more, they called it a more modern look, in the absence of. And one in Swansea was a mall, it was a, a mall type of store, Walmart. And that was a very good source, which that does a lot, like this, similar style, and a lot of strength. So these are, so we're proposing, I'm sorry.
Do you have two stories?
Well, that's one of the questions that we had here, because we have, I wouldn't call it unique, but it's a little bit unusual. We have a, you go up forty feet, again, we're limited to a two and a half story building. This is why I saw it, we go on our religions. So what we're trying to do is design something that will make a fair form work. And we prefer with twenty-five thousand, twenty-four thousand square foot blocks, we prefer that for the demographics that we're seeing here, like a lot of the three stories. And have the third story complete, as opposed to, which only, like, say, only half of the third story can have the full size ceiling. It'd still be a lot less than forty feet, we're going to figure out the pitch of the roof to make that all work out best. Even if we go only half third floor, would, so we're happy for ceiling, that's what we would be coming with eventually. But I was going to discuss that a little more with Joe, I'm hoping it's from the board, because they did, they thought that maybe the fourth story was what.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's a zoning issue, I think we have to talk to the zoning officer. I think we can discuss that, you know, maximum height in the commercial district is forty feet. But then it also says two and a half stories, so.
So I mean, is this going to have a pitch roof on it in town?
We have that issue, we're going to need the, to make that half story a third story work.
Because I think it's part of the flavor of the town, I mean, you'd rather have something that kind of fits in. I mean, the plaza next to it, the town and foundation plaza, right, and that's a pitch roof all the way across. Walmart has that, you know, rather than a blank front wall.
So I think a pitch roof, I was thinking a pitch roof could go, a single pitch roof, what, another, opposed to some type of recent effects, like we referred to. I'm sure that we can design it so that it would have a pitch up, even if the top of it wasn't, even if it wasn't necessary for the design. We'd be still designing a pitch up front, so that it had some kind of shape on the front, that would make, have that flat appearance like this.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, if I, if it goes back, so it can extend all the way back to the point, then the building, you know, we can cover the lot, the lot, like completely useless, but. Who makes that to?
I mean, it's just, so maybe we have a small town, and it's like trying to fix the flavor for, you know, morning.
But I'm, I'm sure that it plays something in the time. That's another one of these, I'm getting here, and it'll be, it's going to be back to the ground, or is that something that, feature approval, we can look at it.
Does the building, when you look at it, can we haul on?
I don't think that's going to.
I mean, roughly. Does it, does it have some pressure? No, it's, I don't know, it's very heavy, but this is.
It's a hundred feet wide by two hundred and forty feet long. And there is a little, I don't know what that pump is in there.
You have a load, load, you have pressure.
So it's hundred by two hundred and forty-four.
So you're going to have, you are going to have access all around the roof.
We don't have access. We have to have access on three side, the fire car.
So they have access here, here, here. They're jogged out in the back.
Yeah, this is the, the solid block.
Oh, okay. Sticking it to the back end from either side.
Right, you would have access. But you go back in here, you can't, there's no access back there.
That's, that would be approaching to fifty foot, no touch on a conservation.
And that was all going back?
The, this is the weapons? Yeah, the weapons, if we go behind the metal of the building now, you can see it. It goes right quite to the, the golf course is a ditch that runs from. A ten hour, that was a, the air plaza that keeps on going down, behind the office.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that just comes around, stops on the other side, the driveway.
Yeah, we stop here, and we stop that all the way from there.
So it's two hundred feet long?
The green line.
One forty feet long.
The green line is, what is that?
That's one hundred feet of the woods.
Two pages, that's fifty, for the bar. Hello, the parent before, I'm sorry, so, so many questions, where I say this, quick, from that, all the class of lane. And we got to do all the whole nine thing, so that it is a visible site at night, and also, we also do a whole nine nine device here. We also really go overboard on security cameras, we're a high definition security cameras, they capture all the security doors. And actually, we got a package early security door throughout the unit, I mean, but certainly, so that, you know, exactly where, at any time. The key lock system that we got is we need every single user, so that they can manage the building, we don't. We don't, who are we supposed to be going to? That they should be only for us. And so our, our experience is that it really is a desire of people. You live and, and are too old and too advanced. We're always involved with, we have a complex people who are worried about this. This is our, we see these small guy. We need to add.
So you're saying that at ninety percent capacity, most you're expecting is about three people per day. And what kind of problems it take for the facility to get up to ninety percent?
That's in a per quarter year. Three facilities in a probably. We have different experiences before I have to use three still enough. That's because it's a big problem. So for the, for the, that also might help enough for our clients. But that's a, that's a whole idea to stick up. We hope that, and we've got lots of research in the graphics and this that we really know. We believe that, that a lot. We give it a ninety percent. Within a year, I think that's, that's very least all the way is. There's not a year to, all of it pushed the spring time in the summer. And so those are the quality of, I mean, I'm sure that should be back to. What?
What made you choose Halifax?
Most importantly would be a lot of, one of the first in brackets, we would have a spare few stores spaces available for casual. Even though it's not a, that's a populated area. We don't have a lot of storage. Some people probably haven't got a lot of storage, but there's a few far over there. Six, seven stores, you have road the other way. But our graphics tells us that we're not going to use storage. When people are vehicle using more than that. That's what it is that, that would be. The other, you have five people's storage for that. And then you have right now, top highs, golden winter, bottom summer. And then the, right, throughout the place, a lot can find out that the worst of things. They don't have history somewhere. Very good, we love those new, six, five months of the back of the tunnel. That's often happening throughout the service. There is time to, to leave, to go. It's one of the shared, we would have that if you were to hold it. That's where they would be outside. Most of our practice, we just try to sort of, here where the access is already there is. And it's not where it's at. There have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of.
Was that an old friend of yours?
All Seattle, Seattle person who's Seattle last year.
It's not within the planning boards, Harvey, but I keep noticing that we put septic systems up near a road. Where we keep adding more traffic and we don't have any balance for growing the road. Because we keep putting septic systems on both sides of the roads. Where we'd be a little wide and unnecessary. It's kind of curious to me. It's not in my purview, just stating.
Well, that's what you're saying. It's a relatively small surface. Anyway, we do, it's very good, so it's reasonable. We can figure out a smaller, more, I'm not sure if that is a good scale.
Yeah, the middle size septic for this would be, because it is different. No, the office and the toilets is two hundred gallon. Pretty, that's approximately two gallons.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't commenting on that part. I just mean how we keep putting them up near the road. So when we keep up creating more traffic in our town. And it's backing up beyond the cemetery and back beyond the school. We're kind of not thinking ahead because all of the businesses in town with the septic systems up by the road. What are they going to do when the backlands are all wet? And then they have septic system up in the front. I just think it's for overall planning for the town. Like not planning board issue, just overall, it's, it's a dumb call in the future for the town.
I think the, I think the road up there is fifty feet, right? You have road fifty feet wide. No, it's fifty foot away.
No, no, it seems like it had thirty cars here, forty cars here, eighty cars here. We keep creating more and more traffic. It keeps, I just find it to be that we're going to eventually need to add lanes. And we're not going to have any there at all.
I used to think, oh, well, that's true. But all of you know, we're, so all right, Joe, we, we look at it. Could we, we would have such like that? I wish you that.
Yeah, we, we can. One, one of the reasons that we have, we put separate systems in the front. We have most of them, that's where we had a very setback. We can't use this area for any, for building. We can only use it for coffee and mannequin. So that's two, it's pretty, it's a separate. At the time, we did our test fits and didn't know how big this was going to be. And of course, the septic has been so far. Also, if, if that's kind of rich, I would say we need to report it like this.
Yeah, again, it's not under my purview. I'm just thinking about the town's longevity as far as what we're going to be dealing with in, you know, five to 10 years. With all the businesses coming in the town, across town, that's all. Like Dr. Bonix is right up on the walk, on the road and O'Reilly's is up. So you see what I'm talking about, about future growth? Like we have, it's not even, it's just a comment.
You should talk about the road. We're always checking this out. This is often.
That's, that's the reserve. So whatever side of the system has, I thought it was, it's a hundred percent reserve. And when this fails, we have a spot.
So that we should, that we should, we should hear the word.
Yeah, this has to be ten feet off the line. We can't move that any drive through the road.
What, what are you off the road now? Is it fifteen feet off?
Yeah, this is about fifteen feet. I mean, if the road could take another five feet, it's still would be fine. If they put five on the other side.
You know, it's easy enough for us to kind of put it back. Check it out.
We got, we got a prime resistance to be, which that is.
Yeah, again, it's not even in my decision making, but it might be something in the future. That if you had to change something, do something, it might be fine. It's just, it's just my comment for like, you know, when you're planning things, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, having significant to do it out, that would be the easiest thing. Make this a primer. This is a reserve state basically like it is.
A lot of those. It's not a field. What?
No, 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 I'm not meaning, I, I was laughing because it's funny. Yeah, not a mistake. You should try five hours and then also.
But I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
So we think you're going to have a ring? Would you actually put those together?
You are.
Right, right. Would you do it?
I probably would, there's some in the back there. If you want, if you're looking at my phone right now. I probably will.
So is your checks on the roof?
I just, you know, it's the summer, the town.
We did.
I think, I think five, fifty feet left to shoot. Fifty feet. I think it'll break about fifty, I think it's fifty five.
That's what, plus a nine, four. We'll plan with three stories. We see that we really show heart and see from the back as a setback.
Yeah.
The next step is for.
We need to show you in the back.
We're willing to be allowing two stories on the third floor. And the back, which I see a lot of off the back. But designing a structure, that's a shut off. So it can be able to play a couple of three down.
And technically, probably out to two and a half story. It's true.
I heard you say something about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I definitely like the biolat sticks with the two and a half stories and the look.
So you, you. You submitted this in. So you're looking for, I don't know, overall opinion at this point?
But we have, we still need a special use for it. We're going for a conservation mission. I think the engineer has to do, review the trade. So it's definitely back there again. We're going to deal with it. We can issue this issue.
Do you have the, 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 the companies? Yeah, so we have the, send it back and, you know. Yeah, I would, I would entertain motion to.
Next time.
Have, I think you could do.
The rabbit. I'll make motion to have Emory Engineering do the review on the project.
Second.
Or is it third?
Aye.
Aye.
You can just go. We need, you know.
Do you have any other question? We have, I think, those, those operations have, have.
Do you know, is that the other thing I would ask for is to give us a lot of extension? Because I don't know, we have thirty-five days and have to be up on the fifteenth of July.
Okay, but it already does.
Um, if you send it in, it just puts it right in.
Right, we have a lot of, uh, we have a, it's going to be something to do that.
When do you want to continue to or?
Well, what are you going to do? You're going to get conservation and then you're going to go zoning?
We, we, uh, question. Alana had asked us to hold up from going, some kind of zoning until we at least came here first. And then she said, as soon as you stop, watch and see it, and then we can get along with their agenda. Because that's going to take a while for the, their decision.
I'm not going to tell you that.
Off the menu?
First and third, Thursday. What about the first, third day of August?
Let's see.
It's, if, if we didn't have to, so that's on that, we have to continue. We did continue prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
So we asked, we asked a real, a, a, a.
Yeah, if you send it, continue this now. And then till August, full time. And then put your money during the August first office meeting.
To, to not rush it and to make it so we won't have to go through another extension. And we have the extension through August twenty-fourth.
Is that August?
Um, no, but it gives us the time afterwards, just in case we need it. So it's the fifth and the nineteenth of August. But then it gets us until the twenty-fourth Tuesday of the opening, I don't think.
Because that's for me, you don't know the second part of the process. But you know, maybe we could soon as I'm coming in. So, so we continue this one, we have to continue the journey until late. But continue the.
The fifth of August. August.
Fifth of August.
Yep. No, don't we? And I think we just sent a lot of dates and then, but we're going to make the extension through the twenty-fourth just to give time.
So we'll, we'll come to see you again as long as we hear that you're back. From the, from fifth, no, fifth. So if you need something to just communicate with us, you know.
Sure. There's any comments of some of the things that you can, I don't know, through us. So we have such information, question, just to kind of actually, I'm not sure. You, you have a way outside of public session, we did a conversation, we can have it along the way. But there was such a, it was all.
Do we make a schedule ahead of time again?
Yeah, sometimes I believe you can, you said these, I should ask this other question. Or I would make a suggestion. Sure.
Yeah, what are we around with operations? Just so that we can cover that now.
Start that.
Nine to nine?
Sometimes they all see you coming in, I'll tell you, we'll try those hours off.
Is somebody on duty when anybody can get in? Or can clients get in when it's closed?
The office is probably very about is where he's all staff and owners and people. Run the office operation. The only time we can, maybe it is after hours is the air period. But let's get for our access. Well, here, this is our all, after all, laws.
Anything else?
Do you sound good? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have you gone to light?
Yes, I've seen it.
We have, presence is not connected for us.
We lost the, 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 the fireworks.
Oh, is that you on New Hampshire plate outside? And then bring it back?
So that's, that's, that's.
Rats.
Yeah.
Are you on Lake One Haseki or?
No, I, I work around it. I'm just, unfortunately.
Yeah, it is, it's fun.
Isn't that good?
You too.
Okay. Do you have the letter from Walmart?
I'll read it then. May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, Town of Halifax. To whom it may concern. It was received on June seventh, twenty twenty-one by the planning board. My name is Sean Boostrom and I am a manager at the local Halifax Walmart. Walmart is requesting an amendment to the town ordinance that restricts the time that we are open for business. We would like for you to take into consideration that we are requesting to open at six a.m. permanently. There are multiple reasons we are requesting this, with the biggest reason being that we would like to serve the community on a more consistent basis with the senior shopping time. If the town would be so gracious to allow this change of opening time to happen. We would appreciate it fully. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to call me or store manager Martin at the following number. Seven eight one two nine four one nine three three nine. We thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you, Sean.
You should put that on the next meeting agenda.
Yeah, I would like to say that we're in the. Yeah, I would like to say that, uh, we're in the planning board office today, looking through the Walmart file, and we're going back in storage to get what we need, um, to be able to see why these reasons were put into play, um, so that we can properly address them for the abutters. Are we notifying the abutters or that would be? I mean, I think Walmart should, um, uh, notify the abutters to make sure that we're doing the justice by the people of the town. Not to say, you know, whether you're for or against it, just to make sure that everybody is aware, aware of it.
Yeah, I think, well, I think it's, um, what I'm, uh, the need to.
Do we, uh, do we need to make a motion for that or should we put this on our next July meeting or push it to August because, I mean, by the time we get it advertised, right? Or not advertised, but would it be advertised? Advertised and, and mailed out to the abutters?
Uh, I really wanted to take a look at the, uh, comments of...
Me too, and so...
I would just put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, if you want to investigate.
That's why I don't allow them to have those hours scheduled.
Yeah.
Well, let's see how it was set up, because of the cyclones, it was covered, it was, uh, we just couldn't find it.
So, our next meeting, just about that, it belongs in July.
Any discussion, like, in the...
Oh, you know what? I honestly think that I might have forgotten to sign it when I was in there today, but I'm not positive. We don't have a gun, I can't, uh... Was anyone?
No. Ms. Jolene, I called the contractor to do a little bit of that. We have not returned at all. Okay, then we have a word from, um, Bobrovsky, on the zoning files.
So, two sixty-nine Franklin Street just needs Rick and Mark to sign it. I don't have any correspondence in my folder. Oh, all right, so are we gonna do subdivision control regulations or are you working on something else? Um, so...
I have a word from the, um, attorney working with the zoning files.
Oh, I don't.
And he was asking to, to give us an update, if it would be convenient for us.
Okay. I don't have any correspondence whatsoever.
Did you have that?
Just that. Yeah, my full, my file ends with, "Meeting finished." Oh, okay. Okay, I'll read it into record. Um, this is, uh, "To the planning board, subject Town of Halifax zoning by law review project. Members, see email below that I sent to you on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. I did not receive a response from any of you." Um, so, on June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, there was an email to the planning board. Anybody else? Um, CCMark at B D H Law dot net about our zoning by law review project, and it said, uh, "Go ahead, miss, the planning board wasn't present for attorney Bobrovsky's presentation at the finance committee meeting on zoning by law review project. Mr. Bobrovsky would like to know if you could meet at five thirty on either July first or July fifteenth to give you a shortened presentation. If those dates, times do not work, please choose a date and time that would work for you and the board. Thank you, Joanne." Can, can I start on something right here? Again, I do not know why there isn't a town committee, um, as promised when we voted on this at town meeting, and that, uh, we have an attorney changing our bylaws without the townspeople.
As far as this goes, they wanted to make sure to us...
Yes.
And what would be the time?
Black fifteen seems okay. I don't, I don't know what we have. We have anything scheduled for that night and...
Five thirty, what do we do?
That's the video.
Then it's okay. What do we have? Four, so do you want to see the family in the movie? Doesn't have to be, uh, four, if you don't have any.
I think it's, it's whatever you, whatever, whatever you guys do. If there's four of us here, I'll see the reasons, I'll just format it. But if all, if all is still, I don't know if it's...
So maybe, yeah, that sounds good. Uh, I didn't see the email from Steve Hayward that I was working and didn't get a chance to look at a video on attached video and photos of Home Street. I didn't see, that, that wasn't, well, it's on correspondence for this meeting. I haven't seen it on the last meeting. It wasn't on our correspondence for the last meeting, which is the meeting that we voted on, but it's here tonight and, because I know that we didn't have it for our last meeting. And it's on our correspondence for tonight. So, more than Joanne do that. I'll make sure that I write our email a reminder. I didn't know she wasn't gonna be here tonight. Um, when I saw her in the office, she didn't mention it at all. I hope she didn't come down with a headache or something. And didn't you say that she didn't say anything to you either?
Yeah, I can get today to put some stuff on the side. So, I'm sure she's okay.
Yes. Um, we don't have our decision letter, um, for Liddell on our agenda, but... Right. Is it in yet? I, I don't see... I have it right here. I have, um, the proposed, oh, it's signed, I guess, oh, it's signed, okay. Oh, I, I thought that we would have had it at the meeting to go over it.
No, we, we approved it last time.
We didn't approve the deci, the, the letter, did we?
Well, that's what we want.
Because I had, um, a question, because it said, "No construction of furniture." Did we specify that they couldn't construct anything in that building?
Uh, I believe that, we, we specified on the basis of...
But I guess what I mean is they are limited not to be able to construct furniture. I mean, like, we could construct furniture in our houses if we wanted to, so that's sort of limiting to a business that's always had that as a use. I just found that to be strong.
If you want to do the news.
Um, I was just trying to read through the, some of it, just to make sure. So if you want to give me a minute? Yeah, and, uh, again, I'm gonna say that this is May sixth, which is, one, two, three, one, two, three. We're, we're way behind on minutes and don't even have any drafts on the second May meeting or any of the June meetings. You notice that? You know what I mean? Very limiting.
That was a conversation we had about the concern of the water runoff and who said, "We'll approve it because there's no basis to not approve it at this point, but if there were further concerns, then he agreed to come back in front of us." So there's no, there was no conversation about construction of furniture in that conversation, in my work life.
Yeah. I thought, uh, and then, like, so the storage of being deep memory, but for years and years that's been, furniture being created and added, man, they started, created wine racks that was sold to all the thing, New Hampshire, there was, there was a little rabbit.
The, the, the correspondence was just driven around the concern of the water runoff, not about the activity of the building. We're in the building, so it's just an interesting...
So it's just an interesting... Did you sign the section of the rocks?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I think I'll also take care of that.
So it looks like we have a special town meeting coming up. Did you see that? The attached article was received by the Town Clerk's Office on June 7, 2021 and presented to the Board of Slockman at its meeting on June 22, 2021. The request is a change in the town zoning bylaw that would remove the buffer restriction that requires a marijuana dispenser rights be located at least 500 feet from an alcohol pouring license. The changes in town zoning bylaws would be as follows. Changing Chapter 167-7D Use Regulations 14, Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers. So basically what it says now is no treatment center shall be located within 500 linear feet of any school or childcare facility or where children generally congregate, any other medical marijuana treatment center, or any established license to pour alcohol under the provision of GL, Chapter 138, Article 12. And it would basically take out or any establishment licensed to pour alcohol under the provision of GL, General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12. And change another part of 167-7D Use Regulations 15, Marijuana Establishments. It would take out, again, just the part about any establishment license to pour alcohol under the provisions of the General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12. I think so, so far. You can talk about something else, I'm just here on the... Do you want to move ahead? I'm not meaning to go back.
This is the correspondence. Yep.
I got this notice in the mail the other day, but it's notice of a public hearing for the zoning board of appeals on Monday, July 12, 2021 at 7:25 in the Great Hall at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Thimner Street, Halifax, Mass., blah, blah, blah. On the application by Stephen J. Nicoletta for a special permit to raise an existing garage and rebuild as in addition to the home located at 1911th Ave, Halifax. Said property is owned by Patricia A. Uld, ALD, CO F&amp;N Properties of 65 Leahy Road, Brockton. As shown on Assess's Map 51, Lot 46, Title Reference Book 54574, Page 70. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct in addition to the existing house and the footprint of the existing garage by removing existing garage and foundation to expand existing bathroom and bedroom and to add a laundry room. This would constitute a continuation and alteration of a non-conforming use in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Sections 167-8A and 167-8B, Area Zone Residential, petition number 946. And another one, just the Halifax zoning board of appeals will be on July 12. We'll... I'm not gonna go through the whole address of the town again, but on the application by Stephen F. Monks and Nancy Brennan Monks for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at 73-73A Hemlock Lane. Said property is owned by Thomas and Mary Ann Shurikian, as shown on Assess's Map 62, Lot 5D, Book 520, Page 5. The applicant is seeking a new special permit for an existing in-law apartment in accordance with the town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Sections 167-7. Schedule of Use Regulations 167-7D 12, Area Zone Residential, Petition 947. Ms. Brennan has anything to say?
No.
Um, I didn't finish reading the section that I wanted to read. I think we can just wait till the next meeting.
I'm just busy with business that we make a motion to put on the agenda for the next meeting discussing the selectmen, having the secretary promote the jurisdiction of the planning board.
I'm with that.
The move to the second. Sorry. Always a bit...
Aye.
Aye.
That's why I expected it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.